Here and none, Councilmember Bixel.
Here and none.
Vice Mayor Monas.
Here and none.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here and none.
Mayor Bill Black.
Here and none. Approval of agenda as posted or amended.
So.
Second.
We have a motion, it's two seconds, call the roll.
Councilmember Abram?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monas?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a five zero. All right. Now is time for the road doctor to tell us what he's done. Come on up, Mr. Peuge.
That is the big question, what have I done?
Straightened up your office?
Oh, that, oh my goodness. Oh, it was. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come here and give you an update on the roads program. What I'd like to start with is a rundown of the task orders that have been executed over the past couple of years. These task orders are basically our mechanism to assign work to our consultants. They are amendments to the master agreements that we have with three consultants for design and three consultants for construction inspection and management services. So, let's get to it. The first task order was handed out to the three consultants in, on April twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three for twenty-two streets. I just go quickly through this because we have seen these slides a number of times before, basically this is the first consultant. The streets that they were assigned, north of Canal became one bit package, south another bit package. The second consultant, one bit package for these streets, rehabilitation of these streets. Same thing for the third consultant, one bit package. So, overall, we ended up with four bit packages that were advertised. This is a summary of the four bit packages. They were all assigned for design, approved by the council, April twenty-five of twenty-twenty-three, and a year later, they were ready for advertisement for bids, award of bid, all of them magically happened at the same day. And the status is very simple there, all are basically done, except for one street that is sitting there, and that's, that was pending the completion of water main replacement that is done. Now we are waiting for the contractor to remobilize, come back and finish that. So, very shortly, you will see the closeout notice of completion for the, for these projects. A few pictures before and after. If you like the photography, it's the iPhone twelve, right here. So I've tried to basically go back to the same location and have the same view, so you can see the transformation. This is Colorado by the high school, high school is obviously to your right. This one is North Quincy. And this one is El Capitan. The transformation here is more dramatic. At this intersection, I'm standing on, at the corner of Monroe, looking at intersection with Palm, this is before, this is after, as you can see, we added a, an island in there to basically channelize the traffic and also provide for ADX accessibility and refuge for pedestrians in that island. This one is just a little bit a hundred feet away from it on Monroe, and I'm looking west at Lincoln Avenue. And here you can see again the transformation of that intersection that improves traffic flow, drainage with the cross gutter that we have there, and also safety for the, for the pedestrians. This one is Columbia, and Columbia Park is just to your right. We also advanced the final design for rehabilitation of Gear Road Corridor. And the first thing I want to make sure that we make clear is, the work that is going on out there is all one hundred percent PG&E. It has nothing to do with the city, it's not a city project, it's not a roads program project. Now, as far as the Gear Road project itself, we are, we had a public information meeting last year and made a presentation to the council after that, and at the time, I said that when the design has progressed sufficiently, we will be back for a second round of public information meetings and another presentation to the council. We are very close to that stage, and we are going to schedule that. We were successful in applying for and receiving four point eight million dollars in surface transportation block grant funding, SDBG, and we are going to go to the next round and ask for more funding for the safety improvements, and I have a slide for that. The SDBG funds federalized the project, so that meant we had to go through environmental clearance at federal level, so we're working with Caltrans for environmental clearance. Really, we are not taking any right away, what we need to have right away certification, lots of paperwork there, utility relocation, we are not relocating utilities, but again, that has to go through a process of certifying that we do not have any utility relocation. Once those are in place, then we are in a position to actually ask for the funding to be approved. Federal funding becomes available in the new federal fiscal year, which starts October first. So at that point, with all the paperwork in place, we are in a position to ask for the funding to be authorized. We come back to the council and say, everything is in place, we have the funding, ask for your authorization to go ahead and advertise the project. Because of the size of the project, we have broken it into two phases. One from Golden State all the way to Monte Vista, the other one, Monte Vista to Taylor. In the first phase, we are working with the school district, they're interested in a bus turnout in front of their school. In the second phase, we are working with Stan State to see how we can work out the bike route, basically in front of their facility, and make sure that they can maintain their parking to the extent possible. Oh, as the twenty-two streets were being constructed, we also advanced another set of task orders, so our design consultants for twelve point eight miles. And again, the first consultant has these projects that ended up in three bit packages. Second consultant, again, three bit packages comes out of this. The third consultant, the lucky one, has only one bit package, and this is the one that actually was advertised two weeks ago. So this is again a summary of the projects under this bit package, seven bit packages altogether. Project twenty-three oh sixty-seven, the three bit packages are listed there. The first one is in closeout, it's done. The second one, still in construction. What remains is basically paving North Johnson between Hawkeye and Tuolumne, and that is being done next week. So basically, essentially, that project is done. The third bit package is on schedule for completion by Christmas. Then we go to project sixty-eight, three bit packages there, the first one is completed. The next two are ready for advertisement, I'm just staging those. End of the year, by the end of the year, both of them will be here for award of bid. The last one is the one that I just showed you, previous slide, advertised two weeks ago, bid opening is on September five, and hopefully, we'll be here with the award of bid on September twenty-third. The idea is to do as much concrete work as possible over the winter, and then do the paving in spring when the weather actually allows. We also advanced the rehabilitation of, the design for rehabilitation of Golden State Boulevard, this is the section between Dells and West Tuolumne. Let's remember this, because the rest of it, all the way to Taylor, we are going to apply for grants in two phases, and I will have a slide on that. And since we didn't have enough in the backlog, we advanced these projects. These were approved by the, by the council in March for eleven and a half miles, they are in design right now. Again, the first consultant has this project, the main part is Dell's Lane. And the second consultant has two distinct task orders, one is in District Three, the other one in District Two. This is the one in District Three, and the part that hopefully we can remember for later is this area bounded by Gear, Christopherson, Berkeley, and Monte Vista. Blue is Fosberg, that was done two years ago. Purple is reconstruction of North Olive. Anything in orange is basically, at this point, is geared for grind and overlay. Let's remember this, because later, we'll come back to this. Okay, here we go, thank you. The second part of that task order is in the southeast corner of District Two. You see Linwood, and also Fifth Street in purple, that's total reconstruction, the other three streets are grind and overlay. Again, let's remember this, we'll come back to this a little bit later. The third consultant has these streets mainly of note here is Broadway between Olive and Canal. Then we also have in District One, Rose, Minaret, and Alpha for reconstruction. This, in all likelihood, will be in two bit packages. So we may end up with seven or eight bit packages out of this, that sequentially, we will bring out. Few streets of note that will be coming out for advertisement for bids in the near future. Gear Road, obviously, Linwood, we are advancing that, that's, that should be a straightforward project that we can get a whole lot of mileage out of by finishing, heavily residential area. Dell's Lane, there's been a lot of interest in that. North Olive is obviously by hospital and heavily trafficked. So, what have we done to this point? That was the question that, Mayor, you asked, what have you done? So this is the pilot project that we did, completed two years ago. I'm going to go through these quickly, because we just went through them. These are the design task orders, the maps for them, and... This was the last task order from a few months ago, and now overlaying all of them together, this is what you see for a total of forty point five miles of roads, either constructed, being constructed, or developed in, into design for construction. This is a simple summary here, as you can see by classification, arterial, collector, and residential, total miles add up to forty point five, twenty-one miles constructed or in construction, and they should be finished by the end of the year, twenty-one miles. Our backlog ends up being about nineteen and a half miles. We are going to bring more projects here to the council to build that backlog, at least for the next three years. District by district, I hope you can see the purple of District One, why is it so heavily highlighted? Well, it's an old district, like District Two, and not a whole lot of streets being maintained through assessment district funds. Same thing with District Two, as you know, the main residential areas between ninety-nine and Golden State Boulevard, and you see some assessment districts in the southeast corner of this district, but it changes in District Three. These are our projects, and now you see a number of streets are being maintained through assessment district funds. Same thing with District Four. A number of assessment district streets there. So, we are going to have more projects in Districts Three and Four, but you see the limited opportunity for streets that are not currently being maintained through assessment district funds. What impact has all of this had on our PCI? Sixty-four million dollar question. Three years ago, the pavement management report was presented to the council. This table basically summarizes all of the scenarios that were run at the time. The most important arrow on the left side is the second one from the top, do nothing, which basically says if, during that period through twenty-twenty-seven, if we did not spend any money on maintaining the roads, our PCI would come down to forty-four. Why is that significant? Okay, at the time, the PCI was sixty-two. So if we didn't do anything, in twenty-twenty-seven, PCI was projected to be forty-four. So a simple math here, you can run the math with different assumptions, but you basically end up with a projected PCI of fifty in twenty-twenty-five. And we are at sixty. So we have actually gained ten points compared to where would it, we would have been if we had not spent the money on fixing the roads. What do we do with all these roads? We have to maintain them, and the city hopefully will make a solid commitment to do that. One was, let me go back a little bit, two, I broke it into two parts, I had this slide last year. One is catch-up maintenance, there are a lot of streets out there that over the years were basically not maintained, no crack seal program in the city, no slurry program outside of assessment districts. Even in assessment district, there was no crack sealing until last year. So that practice has changed now. Then we have the long-term maintenance for all the streets that we are maintaining, fixing now, we have to take care of it, so we have to come back after so many years, crack seal and slurry seal to extend the life of these investments. Catch-up maintenance, again, is crack seal and slurry of streets that are suitable for this type of treatment now, or have been neglected, and now we can't let them get away before, we need to spend more money fixing them. So two projects are brought to the council last month in, in the form of one task order to one of our consultants, and I'm developing additional projects, so next round is going to be a lot more significant than what was brought to the council last month. Remember this one that I asked you to remember, so within the same boundaries, the crack seal task order is going to crack seal and slurry the green areas. So if I, if I put the two together and show the assessment districts in yellow, you see that that entire area is going to be transformed. This is the other one that I asked you to hopefully remember. The task order will slur, crack seal and slurry the green streets, put them together, and you see how this whole area is transformed. There are a number of other opportunities similar to this, and that's how I'm packaging this. The whole neighborhood will be transformed this way. Long-term maintenance, a little boring here, but bear with me, please, in the, when the database was put together for Street Saver based on visual assessment, every street was basically defined and broken into segments of similar condition. So I picked an easy one, Andre Lane, that we just paved before the paving of Andre Lane, and updating the data in the Street Saver. I ran that in two segments, as you can see, one segment has a current PCI of zero, the other one PCI of eight. Now, again, before updating, it was telling me in the middle, my, sorry, you are at zero, there is nothing you can do, nothing is going to change, but in the year twenty-twenty-five, if you actually reconstruct, PCI will go up to a hundred, and then in seven years, you can slurry and extend the life, and so on. So what did we do? We reconstructed Andre Lane, so I put the information in, you see the green arrow, it says that both sections have gone from zero and eight up to a hundred. So the same table has been regenerated and updated, and it says, in the middle, we are at one hundred. If we don't do anything over the years, gradually, everything comes down, goes to seventy-one over the years. But if we do what we are supposed to do, on the right-hand side, we are at a hundred. So in seven years, we can slurry and bring up the PCI to ninety. Same thing in seven years after that, and bring up the PCI to eighty-six. What does it mean? In a few years, we need to diligently go out there and look for cracks that we can seal. And in seven years, slurry. And generally, before you slurry, it's good to have some surface preparation, which means crack seal. That's the long-term program that we need to have and make a commitment in order to preserve and protect this investment. Grant applications, as I mentioned, we are going after as many grants as possible. Here, streets in red are the ones that we are going after. Gear Road, we already have four point eight millions in SDBG funds, but for safety improvements, we are going after another two million dollars more. The rest of Golden State, we are going after two segments, each for five million. Lander, the rest of it is going to be constructed all the way up to Olive and Golden State Boulevard, that's another five million dollar grant application. And last but not least, is Fifth Street for the grant application of two million, altogether for these five projects, nineteen million dollars that we are going to pursue. As far as social media, we are doing the best we can, but we are always open to suggestions. I'm not on Facebook, but this beautiful photography again is from this iPhone twelve. And this one is on Instagram, I follow this one. Our webpage needs a lot of work, and we are working on that. Whatever we do, it becomes more and more confusing, but I'm real, honestly, I don't know how to make it simpler. But we'll do, we'll do our best. If you have any suggestions, obviously, we are open to that. With that, that's the end of my presentation, I'm open to questions, and if you look at the very end, we have a whole bunch of good construction photos there for your entertainment. Any questions?
Yeah, you know, you said that there's, there's a lot going on, on the website, and there is so much going on throughout the city, and I think it's so helpful when you come and really synthesize all this information, because I know I'm, you know, it's hard for me when these items come up, and it's just seeing one piece of the puzzle, so I really appreciate you coming and putting it all together, and, you know, hopefully, this makes it clear and gives everybody some hope that like, okay, if your street's not there, it's coming in the next several years. So, thank you very much, and I hope that we can have you come back, you know, on an annual basis or something to, to give us these updates.
Or sooner, if more hopefully happens.
Well, you know, if, if more's happening, but thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just a question about, you mentioned some, some issues about safety, and one intersection to me, and I know that that's in, in the process, is Gear and Christopherson. Is there going to be any cha, any change to that intersection, design?
The one, one part that we are looking at is northbound left turn pocket capacity. But the entire design will be brought to you, so we can look at that before it's absolutely finalized. So any additional comments that you may have, or the public may have at the public information meeting, we will have an opportunity to include those. There is a reason that my desk is the way it is. All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, members of the public. For those of you who don't, who don't know me, my name's Richard Fortotto. I've been an employee with the City of Turlock for over twenty years. More recently, I have been the leader of the Turlock Police Officers Association for the past five years. During this time, I've had the privilege to work with our city leaders and community on various projects. I recently made the decision to not run again for the position of president. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the men and women of the police department in my role. However, it was my time to pass the torch and spend a little bit more time with my family. I wanted to come before you tonight to thank each and every one of you sitting on that dais for making Turlock a safer place. You have made public safety a priority for this city. You have provided the necessary tools and equipment over the last couple of years, so officers can do their job safer and more effectively. More than that, you have provided your support for public safety. You have shown that by coming out, riding out with officers, coming to swearing in for new employees. And let me make it clear, it's seen by all of our employees when you do that. This does not happen in every city, unfortunately, but it's happening here. As someone who was born and raised in the city, it is a privilege to be able to work for a city where the council supports those who work for it. As a council member, just like being the top of president, there's no money associated with the role. You do it for the love of the city and wanting to see good things happen for this city. As I've mentioned before, you have provided the necessary tools and support for officers. We currently have a chief who's using those tools to make this department what it is today. Turlock has become a desirable place to work under his leadership and his support for his staff. This chief has taken the tools you have provided and implemented, implemented them, making Turlock a safer place to live and work. As a citizen and employee of the City of Turlock, thank you to every director sitting here tonight. It is what you and your staff do daily that makes this city what it is. Each of you and your staff play a vital role in making this city a desirable place to work and live. I'll leave you with this. The men and women who put the uniform on daily to protect the citizens of this city would like to say thank you to this community and council for supporting them. Although we don't get to say it as much as we'd like, trust me when I say, we are grateful to work for this community. And thank you, Sue, for guiding this ship into good waters. God bless, and thank you all.
Good evening, my name is Karina Mendoza, and I am the librarian at the Turlock Public Library. As school is back in session, we're kind of in the slight pause of August is what I say, it's kind of our catch-up month, but that's because September is library card signup month. So I encourage everybody to get a library card. And then also, if you've lost your library card, it is completely free to replace. So just come in with your photo ID, and we'll get you all situated. Let's see, tomorrow, we have a program with the master gardeners coming in, they're teaching us all about how to grow a vegetable garden for the fall. So if you've already, your tomatoes are winding down, your zucchinis and all that, you can learn about how to draw, how to grow root vegetables and other fun stuff like peas and broccoli, or any type of leafy greens. So it's kind of a good way to kind of learn about that. And then, starting September, we are also coming back with our Storytime and Wiggle Worms programs. So if you've never been to Storytime, it's great, it's fun, it is, basically, we read stories, we sing, dance, but most importantly, we are also teaching parents on how to read to their kids, and we're also incorporating early learning stuff, so that way, when they're go to school, go to preschool, go to TK, they are ready for it. So we do teach something simple like how to get along with their peers. We also incorporate early math, also along with reading, and I know a lot of people will say, what does math and reading have to do with one another? But early math really is about pattern recognition. So if you can kind of sort things, you can actually learn how to tell the difference between a big A and a little a, and how all different fonts all mean A, or B, or C, or whatever it needs. So that's kind of one of the important things that we, we try to teach, and that's pretty much it. So come visit us if you haven't, and I'll see you next month.
Good evening, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen, Mil Triwiler. To make good decisions, you need good information. And to do that, you need to get out of the valley and see other states and countries to make good decisions regarding housing and farmland. This year, I've been very fortunate, I've been to eight different states, I just got back from Iowa. I went to Arizona, which there is no farmland in Arizona, so you don't have to worry much about destroying their farmland, because they have, they do have a little in the central part, but it's very immaterial. It has no good things that we can plant, you could grow them anywhere. I went into Oregon, and yes, Oregon has some good farmland, and they do grow good things there. But recently, I crossed into Nevada, Nevada has no farmland at all, you could build houses there all day long. You could build houses there all day long and all night long, and you could build industry there, everything you want to, and of course Elon Musk is going to be doing that, but it has no farmland, so you can't destroy any farmland. There is none. You get into Utah, it's the same way, very beautiful state, very beautiful colorful state, beautiful mountains and, and hills and formations, but again, no farmland. You can't do anything in Utah as far as raising stuff. And I mean, you could grow alfalfa. You can grow anything that has soil levels this high, but in, in our area, we have soil levels as high as from the ceiling to the ground that roots can grow deep into the soil, something you don't see in any other states. Next, I went into Nebraska, Colorado. Colorado had some things. They had, they did grow peaches there, but they didn't look very good. The trees looked pretty bad, but they did have peaches there. I mean, a few peaches, maybe about the size of Dean Air. I mean, that was nothing. You get into Nebraska, you're starting to see farmland. You're starting to see the breadbasket of America, beautiful farmland. But you know what they grow there? They grow corn and soybeans. That's it. Corn and soybeans. It's great this year. Last year, they had a drought year. This year, they had a lot of water. The corn, I went to my aunt's, one of my cousin's houses, her corn was eight feet tall. It was beautiful. But again, you need to see this. You need to know what's going on. We take for granted what we have here in, in our county, and it's not something to take for granted. It's unique. There's none of it in, in the world like it in the world, and if we don't preserve this, we're going to be suffering for it. And again, there's abundance of poorer soils and wastelands, even in California, but in, especially in our nation, for the developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area, the area east of Oakdale, and there was some housing approved there recently. There's also a large land mass west of Patterson, and they've got a lot of good industrial stuff going there. They want warehousing. It's a perfect place for warehousing. Their soil level's about this deep. You could grow very little. So, again, it is so important that we understand how fortunate we are here and preserve what we have. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Connie Stone. I've been a resident of Turlock for 30 years. I'm just here to remind everyone that We Care is still out there, and we still need to support it, and I'm very proud of my colleagues at Sand State who are putting on dinner tomorrow night, and would like to encourage other people to sign up to give a meal. Thank you.
I have no other cards. Anyone else? Well, good afternoon, Turlock City Council and Turlock residents. Justin Farkas representing the Office of Assemblyman Juan Alanis. I'm sure all of you noticed my lack of presence last month on the fourth Tuesday, per usual, and if you did, it's because the Assemblyman was holding a town hall of the zone on the very same day. We were really grateful to have a large number of our constituents come, and we understand why, obviously, the Turlock Council couldn't be there, but no fear, because Turlock was represented well. The president of the Mosquito, Mosquito Abeyment District, Mr. Ryan Taylor, a great colleague of mine and a friend of the Assemblyman's office, was there to represent the City of Turlock and ask some pressing questions regarding state issues, and we have just had a very successful break. However, last week, the session did reconvene from our summer recess, and the Assemblyman has been hard at work shuffling through a lot of Senate bills, because now we're hearing all Senate bills through the back quarter, I guess it is, of our legislative year. The Assemblyman during the break did also have his first bill passed, Assembly Bill 17, which gives public access to precinct maps for all residents of the state of California completely for free. Beforehand, you would have to reach out to your registrar voter's office and pay for a file to those precinct maps. Now, that is no longer the case. Those will be accessible to the public and free. Hope, I'm not exactly sure on when that is implemented by, I'm hoping by the upcoming election. Thank you. Anyone else who did not fell out of card? Yes.
Hi, I'm here again. How many, and it's not a question really, it just requires a raise of hand. How many folks on the dais believe that elected officials should do the will of their constituents? Could you just raise your hand if you believe that is true? Okay, I guess, alrighty, that's an answer. But the thing I wanted to point out was that for the last six months, we have had citizens come and talk about homelessness and how the shelter needs to stay open. Six months. I have followed this council since Kurt Andre was mayor, years and years. Some of you probably weren't even born then, but never have I seen a council so disregard the voice of the people. Six months, and someone has been here every council meeting. The nays, 10 to 1. There's, usually this is empty, there's seven, eight people here again about the shelter. So, I don't know if you're not hearing us, or you don't want to listen, but something needs to happen. The sh- you cannot, if, there is no plan for homelessness. I don't know if that report is done or not, but that's unacceptable to not have a plan. If the shelter closes, what is the plan? And if FYI, it has to do with police, then let me just tell you, under what they're doing in DC, either sending them to a shelter, or sending them to addiction or mental health, let me just let you know, there aren't enough shelters, there is not enough mental health, and there are no free addiction counseling centers, or very, very few. So, those options are out for us. Understand that? They are out for us. So, what is your plan? And, you know, you said that you say it at the end of the meetings, we're all waiting. I'd also like to, Anne Strom has also wanted you to know that while she has a work commitment, she's still waiting for an answer to the plan. So, please, do your job. Listen to your public. They've been here every council for six months, and you still sit there and do nothing. It's abominable, and you're not doing your job.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Dave Koenig, and I'm a 20-plus-year Turlock resident. I'm also here to speak about the homeless shelter and keeping it open. The current policy where folks like Dr. Stone and me and our colleagues cook dinner once a month is not sustainable, it's inefficient, it's costly to the city. The current path we're on is both expensive and cruel. We need to do something to keep that shelter open. We need to take advantage of state funding, and we need to do it now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good to see you were able to make it. I, I hope your employer gets some more people. Having to, two people do the work of five is kind of hard. Yeah. And I wanted to welcome back the Turlock Ambassador to the world, first to Canada, then Japan, and hopefully your body has readjusted to whatever time zone it thinks it's in. Okay? And congratulations on what you achieved.
Thank you.
Also, I think your opening of your new place in Modesto, and also your, your...
Food trailer?
Yes, thank, thank you, the food trailer. So, you, you've been a busy li- she's been a busy little beaver, I, 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 I tell you. So, yeah, I, I wanted to say that. And then I guess I, I would say that, you know, there's a lot of people who don't come to council meetings, who send emails, okay? And we also have had multiple, we, we had reducing homelessness in Turlock meetings that we had. When was that, 2023 or '24? I forget, I think it was '23. You know, it was very heavily attended at the senior center, and then also at the place next door to the police station. I, I forget. And there were gobs of people who came there, so I think it's kind of arrogant to say that she speaks on behalf of everyone in, in Turlock, and to presume that she knows what's going on behind the scenes. So, I would just say that. I would also say, that's right, I wanted to say that. Every year, they kick the homeless out for two weeks, so they can do renovations and go on vacation. And I've talked to some of the homeless there, and I've asked them, do they give you arranged shelter for you, places to eat for you, give you motel vouchers or anything like that? And the answer that I got, at least, was no. We have to just fend for ourselves for those two weeks. So, I don't know, I just throw that out there. Have a good meeting.
Anyone else who did not fell out of card? Okay, we will close public comment, move on to the city manager's report slash updates. And you press your button, please. Can't reach here.
Funny people up here. I wanted to give an update on the housing element, the HCD report, which is the report that gets talked about. We submitted our report. We got the first round of feedback back from the state. We had about 47 elements that they needed to give us feedback on. Our team is going through that and returning another draft to the state. We will post it on 9/2. It'll, the HCD, or the Housing Element Report will be posted for public comment. But let me just say, because I don't know if there's some confusion, the housing element does not, is not a plan for homeless shelters or for the homeless. It's a plan about zoning and how the city's going to zone, and there are some elements in that that address emergency homelessness. So, I just don't want to create anticipation for something that's not covered by the specific housing element. After the review, after the public comment, it will be sent back to the state again. So you know, I don't remember the numbers today. There are five or six cities that their reports are in the third and fourth review, so I'm sure we'll get another round of review back from there. I wanted to mention, you know, so many of the things that happen in the city, it's, it's like oxygen. Unless somebody holds your nose, you don't know what's going on behind the scenes, and so I always want to thank the staff for the work they're doing across the city. I traveled with the mayor and the chief to the Animal Shelter Olympics on August 16 in Lathrop, and you met Cade here. Cade and Comet took, Cade and Comet took home bronze medals, and Odin was adopted. Odin was a, makes it look like it was a beagle in a pit, and that was the dog adopted. Yeah, imagine it. Municipal services, this is the 50th year of Turlock Transit. Fifty years ago this week, from a small office at West Main and West Avenue, Turlock launched its Dial-Ride Service, the city's first public transit option. Since then, Turlock Transit has grown into a robust system, operating 14 fixed route buses and 12 paratransit on-demand vehicles. Through it all, the commitment to providing safe, efficient, and accessible transit service continues to drive the staff. I do want to say that Save Mart hosted its grand reopening. The event was well-attended and featured a grocery bagging competition between Police Chief Jason Haddon and Fire Chief Shannon Evans. Sorry, I'm laughing. They are a bit competitive, and...
A bit?
And I didn't have here who won, so sorry.
Oh, wow. Fire one!
The Seventh Annual Warriors Explore Downtown Turlock is Wednesday, September 17, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be city departments, businesses, and community organizations. Please join the fun with our Sand State friends. And I want to commend ahead Jennifer Figaroa and the housing staff for the work you will hear about shortly. Thank you.
All right. All right. If, if somebody didn't hear me, if my mic wasn't on, fire one, the, the bag off. I'm just going to put it out there. All right, the next item is the consent calendar. There is one minute. If you're going to pull an item and want to ask a question, Mil, you had a question on item F, please come on up.
I have, I have a comment on item 8F, and that is that this is, this is about the Community Facilities District, where actually, as someone builds, they contribute to the city money that helps the fire, police, and pay for the extra services. And this project, this particular project happens to be in my block. I'm happy to see it. It's too bad it's only five units, but it is some affordable housing. We're finally getting a little bit of affordable housing. Too bad we can't get more, because, well, I only have to talk about it next trip, but anyway, what I found out in Iowa is they have plenty of public housing, they have plenty of apartment complexes, they have public, I mean, they have what they need. But anyway, this is a step in the right direction, and it's something we need to do, because they need to pay their share of the tax, so that's about it. My question would be, how come we didn't make this a five-unit, or, I mean, a six or seven unit instead of just a five?
All right. Did anyone else want to speak regarding any item on the consent item? Okay, we'll close public comment, and who would speak to that item? Yes, please. I'm throwing it out there, somebody has to answer. Why only five?
Actually, the zoning only allowed for that amount on there, and they could not fit more than five on that piece of property. With all the constraints and the parking and all the setbacks they had to do, five was the maximum they can do.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions for...
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion in second. We call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes. Passes on a 5-0. Thank you for that. All right, final readings. This is in ordinance, second and final for the turned-off municipal code title, and it's about construction taxes and CFDs. Anyone wishing to speak, I'm opening the public. Closing public comment, bringing it back.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes. Passes on a 5-0. You guys missed out when we couldn't go to the bathroom. The three of us had to stay here while you two were gone having fun, as much as you know. All right, public hearing, 10A. Mr. Moreno. The sacrifice we made for you is significant.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The item you have in front of you is an update to our current user fee schedule. Just to kind of give you a reminder of a user fee, a user fee is staff providing services. So, we like to look at these fees periodically to update them based on salary changes, changing services, and potentially new services we're providing to you to make sure we're capturing them. By legislation, state law, we can't make more. We can only do full cost recover or reduction of that service. So, today's action really just can, kind of clean some of the services up, change some of the language, update some of the numbers, but not, nothing that's overdramatic in the sense of the way. Primarily, what we're doing is giving a, what I like to call a micro update, because we are doing a full study that we come forward to, so you can have more topic discussion around development, full cost recovery, and what all that looks like. So, today, again, to more of a micro update, where we bring back the full study, so we can have a full complex conversation about the information. Any questions?
Questions for Director? All right, open it to public. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, closing public comment.
Move to approve, 10A.
Second.
Motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes.
Thank you.
Passes on a 5-0. Thank you, Director. All right, Ms. Figaro, you're up for like five items or something like that, right?
Bring it on down.
Big stuff to go. Come on.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you is the First Substantial Amendment to the fiscal year 2425 City of Turlock's Denoslos Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for the Home Investment Partnerships or Home Program. On August 23rd, 2024, City Council approved the 2425 Annual Action Plan. The Annual Action Plan outlines the resources anticipated and the general activities to be funded during the... be funded during that fiscal year. The City of Turlock has a Citizen Participation Plan as required by HUD, which outlines the process to amend an annual action plan. Substantial changes must be available for a thirty-day comment, as well as be brought to council for consideration. Changes to the funding allocation for home for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are proposed. Currently, the twenty-four, twenty-five Annual Action Plan shows three hundred thousand in first-time homebuyer assistance, and a little over one point three million for housing rehabilitation for home funds. The proposed amendment would increase the first-time homebuyer assistance home funding by six hundred thousand, bringing your total to nine hundred thousand, and decreasing the housing rehabilitation home funding by six hundred thousand, bringing the total down to seven hundred ninety-seven thousand. Each home allocation comes with a deadline by which funds must be spent. Currently, the city has approximately six hundred thousand in home funds that must be spent by September of twenty-twenty-six. Spending funds in the rehabilitation category has been difficult due to the strict housing standards, and homeowners are unable or reluctant to get loans up to that amount to bring their houses up to housing standards. With the recently updated first-time homebuyer policy and procedures, staff recommend moving funds from housing rehabilitation to the first-time homebuyer for a home in an attempt to spend the funds by the deadline. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Questions? Okay, open it to public. Ron?
My question is somewhat generic. If I remember right, this was the one to where you said the funds had to be spent by September twenty-twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay. Could we get information, that type of information in terms of, I know we have, you know, like twenty million dollars, and some of it has to be spent by September twenty-twenty-six, and by twenty-twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, you know? Could we get a breakdown of that? That would be nice. Thank you.
Of course.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close public comment.
Move to approve, ten-B.
Second.
Motion is second, call the roll.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on five-zero. All right, Ms. Figaro, you're up for the next one?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you is authorizing the sale of three of the five city-owned properties to income-eligible first-time homebuyers through a lottery process. The City of Turlock currently owns five residential properties that were purchased with the intent to rehabilitate up to housing quality standards, and either transfer to a nonprofit agencies to provide affordable rental housing, or to sell the homes to income-eligible first-time homebuyers. Currently, three of the five properties are in the process of rehabilitation, while the other two do not require rehab. Staff are requesting approval from council to sell three of the properties to income-eligible first-time homebuyers through a lottery system. The first property is five-seventy Jason, is a four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, single-family home. The property was purchased with CDPG funds in twenty-twenty-three and is currently vacant. No rehabilitation is required for this property. The next property is eighteen-twenty-seven Shadow Park Drive, is a three-bedroom, two-bath single-family. The property was purchased with CDPG and home funding in twenty-twenty-three and is currently vacant, is currently in the process of being rehabilitated. And finally, twenty-sixty-five Cody Court, Cody, excuse me, Cody Court, tongue twister, is a three-bedroom, two-bath, single-family home. The property was purchased with CDPG funds in twenty-twenty-three and is currently vacant, and is currently in the process of being rehabbed. These properties have been determined exempt surplus land and are now eligible to be sold. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
Questions?
So after the approval of the sale, you, you have all the ducks in the row, right, to really get these moved out into the community, hopefully being occupied by somebody who really needs it?
Yes, we actually have plans, we've been working with the city realtor, and we have plans to put the first property on the market tentatively Friday, the twenty-ninth. And then we have, there is a process that we're working on, there's like a lottery application, because you have to be income-qualified for the funding. And, you know, for more information, people can contact the Housing Division, and we can walk them through that.
Any other questions?
How, how do you come up with a price for the house?
We actually are using the most recent appraisal to begin with.
Magic eight-mill.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, we'll open it to the public, anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I just had my question answered.
If you, okay, perfect. Okay, we'll close public comment, I just want to say that getting these off our list and into the public so that they have housing is super important, I really appreciate it.
Move to approve, eleven-A.
Second.
Motion is second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, passes on a five-zero. And finally, seventeen years I've been waiting for this one, come on, bring it. Seriously, I've asked that long.
So good evening, Mayor and members of council. The item before you is adoption of the updated housing rehabilitation policies and procedures. The clerk is actually passing down the Housing Division's updated flyer for the rehabilitation program. So staff reviewed the existing policies and procedures and recommend the following updates. Update the forgivable loan from twenty thousand to the first forty thousand of rehab costs. This creates additional relief for low and moderate-income homeowners. We removed the amortized loan for owner-occupied rehabs. It's still available for owner-investor rehabs. We found that the amortized over a set period, people within low income just couldn't afford that monthly payment. Update eligible bids from must be within ten percent of rehab specialist bid to lowest responsible and responsive bid. We are finding that this makes it more in line, if it's not within ten percent, we have to go back out to bid. And the cost of material is really making those bids fluctuate quite a bit from project to project. Add that a property owner may submit in writing why they do not want to move forward with the lowest bid, and if approved by manager, the next lowest bid will be chosen. We've had a few instances where people just really didn't want to go with that particular contractor for whatever reason, maybe they knew a friend, or they knew them, and so we actually wanted to give them, we didn't want to let them choose any bid, because we still need to be good stewards of public funds. So we gave them an option where they could submit in writing that reason, and then they could go with the next reasonable bid. Update contractor billing from twenty-five fifty and seventy-five percent of work completed to billing monthly for work completed. What was happening is a lot of our projects are forty-five to sixty days, so that twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five percent was a very hard benchmark to hit. With a lot of our projects, it would just be easier if they could bill monthly. They still have to give a detailed invoice that's checked off by our rehab specialist, and then there's still the ten percent of retention that's held for thirty days after the job is completed. Add that removal from the contractor's list where when a contractor has received two customer complaints or has had workmanship issues as identified by the housing rehabilitation specialist. Again, we've had a few issues with contractors, and we just want to make sure they do represent the city, and it's important that they represent us well and do quality work. Here it comes.
Bring it.
Add section of rehabilitation of mobile homes using CDPG funds up to a thirty-thousand-dollar grant. Some of the caveats to that is the project will not be considered if the cost of rehabilitation exceeds seventy-five percent of the estimated value, and we will be getting appraisals for that estimated value. And for health and safety repairs, an exception to the thirty thousand can be brought to loan committee on a case-by-case basis. Update the maximum loan amount with the exception of mobile homes up to eighty thousand per unit. We remove the reverse mortgages for the program. We added the permanent local housing allocation or PLHA requirements, as that is a new funding source we have for rehabs. We combine loan terms and conditions section with loan types for ease of use just in our policies and procedures. It was reviewed by our housing attorney, and she had various edits and recommendations, and then just minor updates to spelling and grammar. So that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Questions? Well, there's a little competition always in this world, I don't know if you heard about police and fire, but, you know, there's other cities that might have something similar to this. Do we have more, are we putting more money into the mobile home than other cities?
You know, I only know of one other city that does that.
At all, right?
Well, there's a couple that are further away, that are in our sphere, yes.
Okay.
There are other cities, and that's how we kind of ran into this, is through our consultant, having different conversations and looking up regulations, so, and then working with our housing attorney to do some definitions in our policy and procedures.
And the answer is we're doing, giving a little bit more money towards it?
Yes, I, I guess so.
I mean, it could be twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand.
Oh, I see what you're saying, I apologize, yes.
So we are, okay.
Understanding, yes.
So we win that competition.
Yes, yes.
Okay, no other questions? We'll put it to the public, open it to public, anyone wishing to speak on this? Okay, closing the public comment, I just want to say that I have been waiting for this forever, I want to thank you, Dr. Borrego, for keeping these guys on task and bringing this, it's huge. And it's perfect timing, running into the bad weather, these are keeping families in home rather than them having to dump themselves into the streets and being homeless, so this is huge.
Move to approve. I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
I do, yes.
Please, go, go, go.
I, I just wanted to say, you know, you're up here for the third at bat tonight, and I just think it's really a testament to showing that all, all the work that's happening in the Housing Department, you guys are, I think, rocking and rolling and ready to put these funds that are in that twenty-million-dollar list, you know, to get them out in the community where they, where they belong, so. And all the changes that you're making, you know, I keep hearing that we saw there was an issue, and, and we're fixing it now. So I really am appreciative of you being responsive to the needs of these programs. So, and with that, I will move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Abrams?
Yes.
Councilmember Bixel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moniz?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Mayor Bill Black?
Yes, five-zero, thank you so much for all that, that's great. Okay, Councilmember Comments, Announcements, and Future Items, Councilmember Abrams, nothing. Councilmember Bixel?
Yes, I do.
Whoa, wait, what?
Don't mind if I do. Ms. Figaro, I just have to say that I think all the mobile home parks, except for one in Turlock are in my district, so I am so happy and grateful for all of your hard work, and especially the information that you put in the agenda packet tonight. It's really good answering the public's questions, so thank you, it doesn't go unnoticed, we notice. The other thing I just want to say is, you know, not everybody that has an opinion about an item on the agenda, or an item that the city is working on, shows up to a council meeting to comment on that. I get comments in emails, and on my phone, and in my inbox, and my voicemail box, and I have people flag me down in the hallways of the courthouse. I don't think there's a week that goes by that somebody doesn't flag me down in the hallway of the courthouse with a comment about something. So we get a lot of comments, and it's not just here at this council meeting. And believe me when I tell you, we've received probably an obscene amount of comments about we care, so it's a lot. And the last thing I want to say is, yes, in case y'all didn't know, the fire chief smoked the police chief in the bagging competition, I just got to put it out there.
Wow, drop the mic, man. Madam Japan? Got anything? All right. Couple little things, that was amazing, the Animal Shelter Olympics, that was my first time going there. It was so cute, because the one, one dog out of, what, twenty different dogs that were there from five different cities, was the kind of pit guy, and he was super scared, and like he'd been beat or something previously, but every time people were clapping and going, "Yeah!", he'd stop and like have this, just big grin on this dog's face, and that's the reason he got picked up, because everybody's just like, "Oh, my God, he's so cute!". So that was fun, and I really appreciated doing that. The fire chief and I got in the top of the shopping cart at Save Mart, yeah. It was a winner circle, I don't know.
A winner circle.
Oh dang. And then I just want to, we have so many issues that, that we get calls about, and I think right now, Gear Road's been a prevalent one, I keep telling everybody, we're doing a lot of stuff on the roads, but Gear Road's not ours, so I did write the letter to PG&E asking them, please work at night and help us out, the traffic's crazy, and put more signs up for us to know that it's you doing it, so we're going to mess it up our own selves later, but, you know, just work with us. And then also, I want us to look, Dr. Borrego, at doing something about the water meters. There's a lot of people sending me a lot of different information, calling me about, you know, that theirs is broken, we're just guesstimating, we need to just fix this, and whatever that cost is, we need to handle it as soon as possible. It just, it keeps growing, but if you look into that. And then, Madam Clerk, we have close session.
Yes, we have thirteen-A Conference with Labor Negotiators, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-point-six-A, Agency Designated Representative and Senator Manager Superrego, and Employee Organization, the Turlock Associated Police Officers, and B, Public Employment Performance Evaluation, California Government Code five-four-nine-five-seven-B-one, Title City Attorney.
Okay, and we will report out should there be something, if not, we'll see you in a couple weeks.
We're back, we have nothing to report out and good night.